What we're going to talk about today, as you all know, will be the new wage and hour regulations effective December 1st. I'm sure that you all have read or participated in other types of seminars or received information. And as you can imagine, it's getting quite a lot of press. And if you have employees, most of you all owners here? Is that right? Some employees? Some staff? Now, look, that doesn't mean you're going to get a big increase out of this deal, okay? Oh, shoot. That's what we get a lot. We hear this a lot. A couple of things, as was just mentioned. This is not right, left, or indifferent, but I have to talk some politics a little bit in that we've been getting a lot of questions over the last several weeks about has this piece of legislation? Well, it's not a piece of legislation. It was an executive order, as you all know, that President Obama signed with a stroke of a pen to basically increase the guaranteed salary requirements, which we'll go into in a minute. And there was some press, some information coming out of DC that this was going to be delayed maybe till mid next year. Yes, the House did pass a bill to delay the increase in the guaranteed salary basis. But of course, as you know, it's a three-branch government. It would have to go to the Senate, then it would have to go to the President's desk, and certainly he's not going to veto his own executive order. So as of yet, it has not been delayed, so be prepared to plan on complying December 1st. Now, the other question we're getting is, well, we have this new president. His name is Trump. Is anybody familiar with that?
No.
Yeah, okay. And he's vowing, in his first days in office, to review all of these executive orders issued over the past eight years and make some of those go away, which he can do with a stroke of a pen. As we've monitored the political commentary, we've monitored Washington, we've been trying to keep up with this. This particular executive order has not been addressed or discussed by the Trump team, his transition team, or those. That's not to say that it won't be looked at and maybe revised or repealed, but again, who knows? I just think it would be hard if you go out and start changing compensation plans for your employees, and then all of a sudden sometime in February, March, go back and reduce the salary or change plans. So it could be hard to unravel, if you will. But anyway, so that's the latest now, just plan on complying for December 1st. Now, compliance is attainable. It's affordable if you understand the rules and the regulations. Our commitment to this association is that we're going to get into some pretty technical stuff. I'm going to try to make it as easy and straightforward as I possibly can. But you have our contact information. When you get back to your place of business and you start thinking about your individual employees, how you compensate those folks, how you want to ensure compliance, you call me, you email me, no charge, we'll answer those questions because we just can't, we could spend a day talking about this, we just can't get it all resolved here in an hour. So I don't want to leave you hanging. So you have a resource available to you once you leave. Okay. So a little bit about SESC. We were founded in 1945, and the only reason why I bring this up is that our founder worked for the Department of Labor Wage Hour in 1944. He spent about a year working for the Department of Labor as a wage hour investigator, enforcing back then minimum wage was 25 cents an hour, overtime was a new, basically a new law, child labor and those kinds of things. So about after a year, if not the first, he was one of the first to leave the government and start up a consulting firm to help business and industry comply with these rules and regulations. So our history is rooted in this topic, and we feel like we know it pretty well. The other thing is, is you would think after all these years, this piece of legislation would be puff and smoke. But as you'll see in your slides, it is not. Noncompliance to wage and hour regulations, particularly, it's not minimum wage so much. Everybody can handle minimum wage pretty well, but it's the overtime. It's the overtime we must pay for hours worked over 40, or someone here is from Hawaii. Anybody from California? Okay? As you all know, California has some pretty strict overtime rules and regulations. The violations are typically not paying overtime correctly. And in fact, in 2015, this slide comes right off the Department of Labor website, and it talks about the history and their fines that they've collected over the years. So noncompliance to wage and hour, the liability that you as employers face is the largest employment liability that we face. It's not OSHA, it's not family medical leave, it's not all of these other rules and regulations that affect us from hiring all the way to firing. It's this rule right here in terms of not paying overtime. Also off the Department of Labor website, you'll see the key number here is in the top left. 79% of the time, eight out of 10 times, if the Department of Labor, for whatever reason, comes into your organization, whether it's federal, state, eight out of 10 times, they're going to find something. They're going to find some noncompliance. Not that we meant to. Most of the time, obviously, 99% of us are good employers, we're trying to do the right thing, we just didn't know. The laws are so complex, we just didn't know how to comply. The other number there that's of importance is the bottom left, $8,900. That's about the average that an employee would receive in what they call back wages. They were not being paid overtime correctly, so this is, that's the average that the Department of Labor finds. So we talk about the Department of Labor coming into your business, and clients will ask us, "Well, Bill, I hear you. You're trying to scare us. They're never going to come into my business. How would we get audited?" Typically, that's one of two ways. The first traditional typical way is we have a disgruntled employee. We've held someone accountable, maybe. Maybe it's a behavior problem, a performance problem, maybe we've written them up, maybe we've counseled them, or more than likely, we've terminated somebody. And if you've ever been through a termination session, you've heard it. "I'm going to call the Labor Board on you." And that's what they do. There's an 800 number to any number of offices across the country. It doesn't cost them a dime. We need to understand that when that employee calls the Department of Labor, makes a complaint, the folks on the other end, and again, I've got to be careful about right, left, or indifferent, but that government official, that investigator, takes them at their word, they don't ask any difficult questions, and thus, they're going to contact you and say, "We need to conduct an audit." They're not going to tell you that was a complaint, they're not going to tell you if an employee called, turned you in, made a complaint, they're just going to call you, and in a matter of a couple of weeks, they're going to come in and audit your records. At that point, you need to know there's not a lot that you can do. You might can delay the meeting, but they're under very strict guidance from DC in terms of how much time they have to audit a client or audit a business and close that case. So they're going to be very aggressive with you in terms of trying to get on site, getting the information, reviewing that information, your payroll information, and making a determination. You can call us or maybe a representative of yours, someone who represents you, if they've had a lot of history in wage and hour. And let's say that you called us before they came in. About the only thing we could do at that point is help you gather the records in such a way that helps that investigator move through the process a little more efficiently and easily. Convince them that you know what you're talking about, that you've done your homework, and sometimes that'll help. But other than that, just prepare for them to come in and review your records. So let's say that they find something. Again, you didn't mean to do anything, didn't mean to pay someone incorrectly, but they did find some sort of overtime violation. They'll roll back typically at this point 24 months, and they themselves will calculate what they think is the overtime due to current employees as well as past employees. Once they do that, they'll sit down with you in what they call a closing conference, and they'll basically demand payment. And if you refuse at that point, because most of our clients or most businesses want that information reviewed to make sure it's accurate, if you refuse, they'll threaten to sue you at that point. But always have that information, always have their calculations reviewed by someone just to make sure that they're accurate. What the trend is, so for my 28 years, that's the liability, is back two years for a nonwillful violation. The last couple of months, I've got cases in West Virginia, some in Colorado, cases throughout the country where automatically the Department of Labor is issuing what they call liquidated damages. And that means they're taking this two-years-back wage liability and doubling it just because they think the employee is due the liquidated damages. So now you're looking at double the damages. So it can get costly pretty quickly. The other way that you can get in trouble is an employee doesn't go to the Department of Labor, but they call an attorney. Going to go through the same process with an attorney, that attorney's going to call other employees to sign them on to this case. The audit's going to be assessed or conducted. We're going to assess if there's any liability. Let's say that there is liability. We didn't pay overtime correctly. The advantage here to the employee, disadvantage for the employer, is that automatically through a lawsuit through the state, two years is provided to the employee who's due the overtime back wage, two years of liquidated damages automatically applied through the court system, don't have to ask for it, and then you, as the employer, pay the employee's attorney fees, which can be many times more than the back wage liability. So it can get costly pretty quickly. Okay? So that's how you get in trouble. Now, there are some industries that they target, they will not say that they do, but there are some industries, some professions that they target, primarily fast food, home care, there are certain industries that what they call low-wage industries that they call on, knock on the door randomly. The other thing, just as a footnote, this year, there's so much press around this change, there's so much communication, frankly, some miscommunication, misunderstanding. If your employees haven't asked you about it already, I'm sure they probably will. So out of interest, particularly the millennials, they're going to, you know, take care of themselves at some point. I've got two of them, so I can speak to it. They're calling, they may not be disgruntled, but they're calling the government. Okay? Just like these two ladies are thinking about, right? Okay. So what we're going to do is, we're going to walk through the Fair Labor Standards Act. We're going to go through this very slowly. We're going to start from the beginning, starting with minimum wage and overtime, and we're going to lead up to December 1st. It's very important that we do this because organizations, most organizations, and we've been doing these seminars for six months across the country, and we're finding that there's lots of misunderstanding to start with, more or less with December 1st. So let's just lay the groundwork. I'm going to walk through this slowly. If you have questions, I think we're small enough to go ahead and answer those questions as we work through this rather than at the end. So feel free to do that. But in essence, regardless of the several hundred thousands, well, not hundred thousands, but thousands of pages, the Fair Labor Standards Act, the regulations are, there's three things that we must do with all employees, and you all know this. And the three things are, we must pay minimum wage for all hours worked. Of course, federal is 725. Many states, somebody from here from San Francisco? San Francisco has their own higher minimum wage. Some counties have their higher minimum wage. If you operate in one of those areas, you'll know what the minimum wage is. But we must pay minimum wage. We must pay overtime. Federal is overtime at time and a half over 40 in a work week. Again, some other states are more aggressive than that, and then you'll know those rules and regulations. And then, of course, keep a time record so that we can prove that we, in fact, paid minimum wage in time and a half over 40. Unless a position in your organization is what we call exempt. And the Fair Labor Standards Act issued these exemptions in 1938. There's been very little changes to these exemptions. So if a position performs certain duties, and we're going to go through these duties, and they make a guaranteed salary coming December 1st of $47,476, you don't have to worry about overtime. Okay? Of course, the challenge is, is we're going to have a lot of employees on a salaried basis potentially under that $47,000. But let's walk through these exemptions. Again, the position must meet one of these exemptions as prescribed and make the salary. I did this for Plumbing Heating Contractors Association, and I had a question at the end of the conversation, at the end of the seminar. "Well, I've got a receptionist. I'm paying her on a salary. Do I have to increase her to the $47,476?" No, you don't. Okay? Only if you want to avoid overtime, and that is, they meet one of these exemptions and make the salary. So first one is executive exemption, pretty straightforward. Someone managing, actively managing as a primary duty, two or more employees, and they're managing as a primary duty. Okay? They're not a manager, and then maybe a dive instructor, or performing hourly work that they manage. They need to be managing. Anybody large enough to have managers outside of family or owners? Okay? Oh, yeah. Good. Very. So these folks need to be managing, hiring, firing, coaching, counseling, directing, all of these kinds of things versus hourly, non-exempt work. And if they're managing two or more employees and they're making the $47,476, we don't have to worry about overtime. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
This is a question pertaining to a friend and house hamburger places. If you have a manager managing, say, a hamburger place, and they're actually flipping burgers or making milkshakes, are they still considered a manager? If they're working, like in our industry, we're doing everything, they may be a manager over here.
Okay. Great example. So how much hourly, for better term, how much hourly work can a manager do? If the Department of Labor comes in and they see a manager performing non-exempt or hourly work most of their time, they're going to say they're due overtime. So for example, the example you used, we work with the Hardee's Association nationally, and they've got managers that manage a Hardee's location, fast food location, and they will help, they'll do hourly work when training, they'll fill in when someone's absent, maybe during a rush, but that's not why they're there. They're doing some hands-on hourly work, but their primary duty is managing. So you can do some, but you've got to be careful. So if you've got folks that are managing and then also doing the work most of the time, they're probably due overtime. And that's on a case-by-case basis. That's not a blanket determination, so it's best that we call and talk about the duties and responsibilities. Okay? But that's where we get in trouble with this exemption, is we're paying someone on a salaried exempt basis, but they're doing hourly work most of the time. Next one's even more difficult. It's what we call the administrative exemption. Okay? By title, by term, it sounds very easy to meet, but it's a very high-level exemption. The administrative exemption is designed for someone who's managing a department or a function, who's truly in charge, making independent decisions that affect the organization and others. It is not your secretary, it is not accounts payable, it is not payroll, it's not all of these internal positions that you may have on salary. It's more like a controller or a CFO or director of human resources, someone at that level versus staffing level. Questions? If you have someone on staff internally like that, and you've got them on a salary, you're not paying overtime, again, you may want to call, and we can talk through the specifics in terms of whether or not they meet this exemption, but it's a very high-level exemption. Next one is not going to apply, but you're going to be familiar with it, is what we call the professional exemption. I go to college, typically additional graduate work, and attain a degree or certification to practice law, medicine, be a teacher, et cetera. Okay? So that's for doctors, lawyers, et cetera. It is not some, okay, go ahead.
About a four-year degree.
Perfect. Great. She asked about a four-year degree, even with a master's degree, and I've got a master's in business administration. That is not a blanket, no, just because you have that. It's got to be very specific to what you're doing. Yep. Good question. Computer exemption, anybody large enough to have anybody internal as a computer person? Probably not. Okay. That's really reserved for programmers, analysts, et cetera. It's not your help desks, et cetera. Anybody have anybody in outside sales for your organization? Probably, you do? Okay? So outside sales. If you have someone engaged in outside sales, they've got to be away from your business. It does not count or inside or telephone, not computer, but it's outside, working, calling on customers. And if they're doing that two and a half days a week or more, 51% or more of their time, no overtime. In fact, you don't even have to worry about the $47,476. Under the outside sales exemption, there's no minimum threshold. You can put them on straight commission if you want to, and they can make it or not. Okay? Okay? Highly compensated, I'm not even going to uncover, it's really not applicable, but the government says if you guarantee someone $134,000 and they're doing certain other duties, you don't have to worry about overtime. So if you have any, yeah, I'll take that 134, right? So if you have a position that meets any of these exemptions and makes the $47,476, you don't have to worry about overtime. But start with these exemptions. Don't start with your salary level. Start with the exemptions, because then if they don't meet one of these, it's a moot point. Just because you pay someone $47,476 doesn't necessarily mean they're not due overtime. You may have someone, a maintenance person, who maintains your shop, and if they're working, you may pay them $80,000. You're not going to, but if you did, they're still due overtime because they don't meet the duties test. Okay? All right. Just a little bit of commentary. I'm going to get off the topic here just a little bit. This slide, again, comes off of the Department of Labor website. And what they're predicting is about 4.2 million workers that fall in this doughnut hole. Currently, the salary requirement to be exempt from overtime, not to receive overtime, is $23,660. Most organizations can meet that. Now, December 1st, that is jumping to $47,476. So they estimate about 4.2 million salaried workers in this doughnut hole, if you will, that will be affected. Meaning that if you have someone that's being paid $35,000, maybe they're an executive exempt, what are we going to do? Are we going to increase them to 47 and not pay overtime? Or are we going to change pay plans, maybe an hourly rate or other, and pay overtime over 40? To me, it's a lot more than that. Think about, what if I've been with your organization for a long time, 10, 15 years, and I just happen to be over the $47,476? Maybe I'm making $50,000 and I'm exempt. And there's someone that's been there a fewer number of years, and they're making 43, and you decide to increase them to 47. What about me? I didn't get the increase. So you're pushing people up in the organization, and it can create some compression and some internal equity issues. You know, just because I've been here longer, I didn't get the pay increase. So there's other folks in your workplace that could be affected when you start changing pay plans. So think about that before you do. Also, as you all know better than I, you're good business operators, labor cost, young ladies, labor cost is your largest single controllable cost. Okay? Controllable cost. Light, heat, electric, rent, all this stuff that you may buy out here on the floor, somebody's going to tell you what you're going to pay for that, right? But you can decide, am I going to go into business? How many people am I going to hire? How much am I going to pay them? What benefits, if any, am I going to provide? So you're in control of that as the business owner, and the better you control that and have more efficiency within your labor, the better off you are on your bottom line. So for the government to tell us to go out, and this is what they expected, increase everybody to $47,476, that's just not reality. We just don't have that kind of money in our margins, and nor should we. Okay? But anyway. Okay. Does anybody have these salaried exempt people that we're talking about on any type of bonus or sales commission or any type of commission program? You do? Okay. So for the first time in history, this is very important, we can apply up to 10%, maximum of 10% of the $47,476. 10% quick math is $4,007.47 annually in a form of a bonus against that guaranteed salary. So that gets us down to about $42,750 roughly. So if you have $42,750 salary plus the 10% bonus, that gets me to $47,476, right? Okay? So you can apply up to a maximum of 10%. Yes, ma'am?
Does that affect profit sharing?
It does not. It is not. Very good question. What they call it is, there's two types of bonuses or commissions the government recognizes. One is discretionary, completely discretionary. We decided at the end of the year, maybe we'd do a Christmas bonus. It's completely discretionary based on what we want to do. Also, benefit-related, it is not related to profit-sharing 401K or anything like that. It's what they call a nondiscretionary bonus, meaning that, Bill Ford, if you do this, if your behavior, your production is this, I'm going to pay you this. Attendance, safety, sales, those kinds of behavior incentive-type bonuses is what they count. Now, what you have to do is you have to look at this quarterly. You can't wait till the end of the year to make it up. You have to look at it quarterly. So if you're applying the bonus, they need to make a little over $1,000 a quarter in that bonus on a prorated basis to get to the $47,476. So you have to settle up quarterly. I went through that math very quickly. If you have questions on that, again, just let me know. But that gives you a little wiggle room. Okay? All right. Do we have people, do we have staff that may meet one of these exemptions and are currently being paid a salary under the $47,476? Okay? All right, most of you, that's why you're here. Ma'am?
No, I forgot the I have to.
Oh, okay. All right. So you have some options. Limited, but you have some options in terms of what you want to do with these employees. You can either continue to make them exempt, meaning we don't pay overtime, or we make them nonexempt and start paying some sort of overtime. The first one I put up there, and I can tell you, my clients have told me, "Bill, I don't care what you say, we're not going to get in trouble. My employees love me, they're never going to turn me in. I'm not going to do anything." They may have gotten away with that for many years, but with the changes this year, and again, the press, and there's so much PR around it, I'd be very careful because most of the clients I've been working with, their employees are asking. They're already asking about these things. Yes, sir?
There's been more and more, it's no division. Division. They have gone after. They have gone after.
Did you hear that? So basically, what he's saying is, the particular company is what they call Morgan &amp; Morgan, particularly in Florida, there are in other states. If you're in any kind of metropolitan area, you're seeing these attorneys advertise billboards, newspapers, they're advertising for this type of work because, remember what I said early on? If an employee calls them, you're paying their attorney fees. So they love it. They don't have to split anything with the employees. And I've had some cases at the end of the case where the employer felt that they were gouged, cranking those hours. For the court system to say what's reasonable and what's not on attorney fees is very difficult. So it's going to be expensive. So that's why they're advertising, because it's low-hanging fruit for them. And then also, what happens, employers will get a letter from Morgan &amp; Morgan claiming they've got plaintiffs that are doing this work, and if you don't do this, we're going to shut you down, sue you, blah, blah, blah. And what happens? Owners, managers freak out, get nervous, and say, "Okay, how much?" And they'll settle it out, maybe when there's not even a need. But so, yeah, that's going on for sure. So doing nothing is probably not prudent. The next one is what the government thinks you'll do is just increase the salary to $47,476. That might be an option. They may be at 45, they may be at 46, you might be right there. If you increase the salary next year, 217, 218, you can always share more cost and benefits or maybe not give an increase or something like that. You can recoup it somewhere down the line.
Still might not be exempt.
Still might not be exempt. Yeah. And well, why you, that's a good point. Before you do anything with these, make sure that, review your exemptions. We can do it on the phone within 15 or 20 minutes, and I give you an opinion whether they're exempt or not. The last thing you want to do is increase Bill Ford, who's at $40,000, to $47,476, and I'm still due overtime because I don't meet the exemption. So be very careful. Again, check your exemptions.
I was told that as my supervisor, the choice to pay me overtime if I work overtime, that's not true, correct?
Oh, okay. So we'll talk about this. I want to pick on you again. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just completely confused because no one in my job understands this, that you and HR people. I'm like, whoa.
So this young lady, and I'm not picking on her, but this is really going to fire you up. She works for the state of Florida. Federal government, state government, local government, staffs of elected officials do not have to pay overtime.
What?
Oh, yeah. They protect themselves. So yes, that's why you're confused. Now, they have to issue comp time, time off in lieu of time and a half, so you get comp time. So, yeah, well, you're excused.
I was confused.
[laughing] It's employer's choice. Some, some government offices, some political subdivisions of the state, library, some, some organizations do pay time and a half, but most do the comp time. Yes? Yes. Yep. Yep. But that's, again, just for government. Yeah, okay. All righty. So the option is to increase forty-seven, four seventy-six. The other one is, obviously, most will be doing this, change the salary, come up with an hourly rate and pay time and a half over forty. You can kinda sort of back into that, see what their annual earnings are, get a good feel for what they're working in terms of hours of work, and then try to come up with an hourly rate. And if they work the time and a half, they'll be whole. No guarantees under, under, but, but if they do work their normal hours, they'll get their time and a half. The other one is what we call a fluctuating work week. California, anybody in Pennsylvania? Probably not. Don't allow the fluctuating work week, but the fluctuating work week is an option as well. And anybody can be put on what we call a fluctuating work week. There are other types of pay plans that you can use before I get into the fluctuating work week. You can put them on a, a day rate, you could put on a piece rate, you could put them on a per-trip rate, all kinds of things that you could consider if you wanna, but those are all due overtime. So, okay? The one caution with the hourly rate, the only thing that I can tell you here is if you had someone being paid on a salary, maybe they've been with you several years, you gotta think about their reaction. Normally, the reaction is negative. "I budgeted my life, my house payment, my car payment, whatever it is, on my guaranteed salary. I like my salary. I like who I'm working for, and now you're gonna put me on an hourly rate? Nothing guaranteed. That makes me a little nervous." Okay, so you might wanna reassure them somehow, because if they don't work the forty, they don't get their salary that they're used to, if that makes sense. Okay? The other thing on your side with hourly and time and a half is very obvious. If you don't have a good feel for what it takes to get the work done, putting some on on an hourly rate. Most employees, ninety-nine percent of them are good folks. They're not intending to cheat ya, but overtime, that time and a half is lucrative. They'll start coming in early, staying late, taking longer to do whatever it is they do, and just two or three or four hours of time and a half over forty a week gets pretty expensive with some of these folks. So make sure you got a good feel for, for, for hours of work or a good method to manage. So many, and I don't know if you all have to do this or not, so many are going to GPS systems, telephone, recording time on telephones, all kinds of things, just to try to keep up with time. If they're out of the office now, yeah. Okay? Fluctuating work week. So what the fluctuating work week is, and you're gonna be confused by this, so you can imagine if you try to communicate it to employees, what their reaction's gonna be. But if we think about it and we communicate it properly, it's really a win-win for you and the employee potentially. The fluctuating work week allows us to pay a salary. Maybe we continue to pay Bill Ford thirty-five thousand dollars. "You can't get me to forty-seven, four seventy-six, so I'm gonna be non-exempt. You really don't wanna put me on an hourly rate. I don't wanna go to an hourly rate." Maybe this is, maybe this is immediate, maybe this is a way that you can continue a guaranteed salary. Anybody can be put on this program in your organization. So you continue to pay me a salary, and then what you're gonna do is you're gonna pay half-time over forty, not time and a half. And the reason why the government allows this is that it is a guaranteed salary for all hours worked. The negative, potential negative for you all is, is that Bill Ford comes in Monday and I'm on this salary. I'm out sick Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I don't have any vacation, sick leave, PTO. I've exhausted everything. I still get my salary. Okay? So if somebody's missing a lot of time, you may not wanna put them on this. So it's a guaranteed salary for all hours worked. On the other end, it's also a guaranteed salary for forty-five, fifty, sixty hours a week, whatever it might be. I've already paid straight time of time and a half. I've already guaranteed it, so all I have to do is pay the half-time. Okay? So the advantage to the employee is they're not going to an hourly rate. They're making the same thing. In fact, they may make a little more in this half-time. So how it works is, you get your salary, six hundred bucks. You divide total hours worked into the salary, not forty, but total hours worked, so it may change week to week, hence the fluctuating work week title. You're gonna come up with a regular rate. This one is thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents. You take half of that, so you can see the number is six sixty-seven, and you multiply that by five hours overtime. So the overtime payment is thirty-three dollars. Okay? Let's say, let's go back to the other option. "Bill, we're gonna put somebody on an hourly rate and time and a half over forty." Fair enough. Probably, most people are gonna do that. You're gonna go through the same calculation probably to come up with that hourly rate. Bill's making six hundred a week. He averages forty-five hours a week. We're gonna come up with a rate of thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Okay? Do the quick math. Time and a half, you're at a twenty-dollar-plus rate. Times five, your overtime now is at a hundred bucks plus. So you're paying about a third. You're not really taking advantage of the employee because they're getting their salary, they're still getting their annual earnings, they're still making the thirty-five thousand. But there's a lot less at risk for you as, as, as the, as the owner or manager. Okay? So, so it's an option, and, and again, it can be win-win. Now, I caution you, don't go out and put these folks on a fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy-hour work week and pay them the half-time because that half-time gets really small and they feel taken advantage of. If you've got them around forty-five or fifty, it normally works, works pretty well. Okay? Any thoughts? I, I know you're glassy-eyed over the fluctuating work week, but it's, it's a, it's a way to pay someone a salary and then also pay the overtime at a, at a lesser rate. Yes, ma'am? Does an employer? No? They, they'd have to seek somebody out. No. A lot of people, that's kind of a, well, that is a good comment. I'm sorry. A lot of people know about the fluctuating work week. Anybody use ADP or Paychex or some of the big payroll companies? They're not talking about it because their system does not allow it. So what you may have to do if you're with ADP or, or a system that doesn't allow it, you have to do the calculation in-house and then send them this. And I've got a way, there is a short method that the government has provided. There is a very short, easy way to make this calculation week in and week out. Okay? Set it up in an Excel spreadsheet and do it. Yes, ma'am? Every two weeks?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I know. I, I'm gonna cover that in a little bit. We're gonna answer that right now. What she's talking about is most employers will pay every two weeks, or the fifteenth and the last. And if you're, if you're doing processing payroll, the key number in your head is that eighty hours. Well, you gotta be careful because if I work forty-five hours in one week and thirty-five the next, I'm due five hours overtime because overtime is on a week-by-week basis. You can't average work weeks. But very good question. Were you, did you have a, okay, I'm sorry. Right. So, yes, sir? You're a smart man. But the government has figured you smart men out. What they say is, you cannot fix, what he's saying is, you can easily back in to this, guarantee the number of hours worked. I'm gonna pay you forty-five hours, forty-seven and a half hours. Here's your salary. Here's your half-time. It's always gonna be the same thing, right? The hours have to fluctuate. They have to change from week to week. In fact, the government requires, not requires, but they like to see the hours even below forty. So they wanna see it changed so that we don't back into it and fix it. So that's the thing about the fluctuating work week is the caution is be very careful. Now, I thought they were gonna have to change this a little bit. I called a buddy of mine. He, he runs the southeastern district for the Department of Labor. And I said, "What about the fluctuating work week?" He says, "No, they didn't change it." And I said, "Well, I'm getting clients talking about it more and more because of this." What does fluctuate, what does change week to week mean? I don't know. So they don't really have a measurement of, does it have to be two hours, three hours difference every week? Or how often it has to change just as long as it changes? Okay? So it might be forty-five, forty-five, forty-seven, forty-three, forty-three, thirty-nine. Just, yeah. You're a smart man. Ma'am? Yeah, yeah, exactly. And it's really designed, technically, it's really designed for, originally, it was designed for utility folks, where they had linemen out fixing lines after a storm or something, and they didn't know how many hours they were gonna work. So they would work long hours one week and then short hours the next week. Anyway. So hopefully, not hopefully, but, but the position, yeah, it, the hours need to change, whether it's based on their job or whether you schedule them. Preferably on the job, yes. Lots of it's on the discretion of the auditor. Yep. That's scary. You can have, when we talk about these exemptions, you can have an investigator from Nashville and an investigator from Las Vegas. They're gonna come in and they're gonna see these things completely different. That's why you always should have someone who's got some experience to help you. I've got a case in, the one in West Virginia. This kid just, just came out of training and he's assessed about five hundred thousand dollars. He's gonna do the liquidated damage. We're talking about a million dollars. This guy's gonna just close his business. But we think we found some mistakes, so hopefully, we're gonna get it down. But, yeah, you never know. Don't assume that that investigator, that Department of Labor employee is an expert. Okay? All right. So that's an option. Any questions on what you all might, yes? Yes? They're gonna go back two years. Yes. And right now, at least between now and January twentieth, we'll see what, what happens. You'll probably get liquidated damage. They'll probably double it. Oh, you've been through this? Well, you've been sitting here baiting me or something with, huh? Twenty-five cents per hour or total?
Total.
Don't you tell me that they issued a, did you have to pay twenty-five cents? Oh, my goodness. Wow. What state was it? State of Illinois. Never dealt with a, were they pretty easy to deal with?
We were here.
Oh. Yeah, okay. That reminds me of the old days, Mutual of Omaha, Sunday night, about six o'clock, Wild Kingdom. I know what you all did. So what was it? Marlon Perkins would sit in the Jeep and he'd send out, who, who would he send out? To go fight the lions, huh? Jim, to go fight the lions and tigers. So y'all sat in the Jeep and sent somebody else to fight. Okay. So any questions on, first thing you wanna do is this gentleman said, "If you have anybody on a salary, before you do anything, make sure that they could be exempt, possibly. And then if they potentially can be exempt, then you're gonna have to decide what you're gonna do with their salary or changing, change, change pay plans." Okay? All right. To, to finish our time, let's assume that some of these employees may go to an hourly or a non-exempt. They're due overtime. This is for all your hourly employees, fluctuating work week, anybody that, that is due overtime. Okay? Now, let me go back and make one comment. I don't wanna confuse this too much. Anybody can be paid a salary. The only requirement, remember the three requirements, minimum wage and overtime? So if they're, if they're non-exempt, they get overtime, either fluctuating work week or time and a half over forty. You may assess that you have an accountant in-house, and you have them on a salary of thirty-five thousand dollars, and, and you look at their hours of work and they never work over forty. You may not wanna do anything. You may not wanna change and just leave them. Again, your only requirement is to pay overtime over forty, so anyone can, can be on a salary if, if they're not. All right, so these traps or violations are, are based on our auditing work. We're gonna go through six of these pretty quickly, but this would apply to, again, all your non-exempt hourly folks that are due overtime. The first violation is most common. We're paying someone a salary, no overtime, and, and they don't meet one of the exemptions. Commonly, office managers, accountants, marketing, IT, purchasing agents, a lot of those positions are typically due overtime. So again, check your, check your exemptions and who's on salary and who's not. Got this case right now. Employees cannot waive their rights. So we were working through, through the government with this up in Richmond, Virginia. Two highly-paid employees in the eighties due overtime. They didn't meet any of the exemptions. They were inside sales folks. They were gonna sign a contract, a waiver, an agreement. "I like the way I'm paid. I don't want the overtime. The last thing I wanna do is go from an eighty-thousand-dollar job to an hourly rate." And the Department of Labor investigator said, "Look, if you don't want the back wages, then we'll take them." And that's what they'll tell you. Either the employee gets them or they go in the treasury. Okay? So an employee can't waive their rights no matter how much they like the way they're paid. Okay? Of course, they took the money. Say again? Yeah, this is, yes, yes. Yep. Boy, your ti- your timing's perfect. So, yeah, lunches, very difficult. So what are hours worked? This is probably the biggest issue, creating the overtime due that people aren't paying. So the first one that we see is for a period of time to be unpaid. If we're not gonna pay someone for a period of time, they need to clock out at least thirty minutes or longer. So let's say you do have a lunch and you're not paying for lunches. They need to clock out at twelve or whatever time it is, but as an example, twelve o'clock, and then back in at twelve-thirty, no sooner. Let's say Bill Ford goes to the owner and says, "Look, I want a fifteen-minute lunch. I wanna leave early to pick up a child at school. I just want fifteen minutes." And I clock out at twelve, back in at twelve-fifteen. All's good. Everybody's happy. You get audited by the government. Guess what? You gotta go back and pay that fifteen minutes. So if you got smoke breaks, any other kinds of breaks, or lunches, or personal errands, if they're clocking in and out, make sure that it's at least thirty minutes or longer, or you edit those records. There's so many issues with this, with it being electronic and it goes straight to payroll and nobody's reviewing it, and it goes straight to ADP. ADP's not watching or checking. Just edit your time records for these kinds of things. Somebody was raising their hand on lunches. Did somebody raise? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Of course, we gotta pay for meetings. Yeah, shoot, of course. To, to me, or even with the Department of Labor, she's having employees having a problem with them working through lunch. Of course, if it's thirty minutes, that's two and a half hours potential overtime a week. So maybe that's why they're doing it, to get paid. But to me, that's a behavior, that's a disciplinary problem. Now, it's easy for me to say, "Go out and discipline all your employees and ultimately terminate them if they don't get better." That's hard to say because there's nobody typically better out there to replace them, but that's a behavior issue. Some have gone, and I'm not recommending this necessarily, some organizations have gone to automatic lunches. We're automatically taking thirty minutes. And that kinda, the employees then will start taking the lunch. But if, again, if they work through lunch and the government came in and they saw that they worked and you benefited from it, they're probably gonna tell you to, to pay it. Automatically? Sure. Make sure you have a policy, make sure it's clear. Lots of employers do automatic deductions, particularly when they're away from the office, traveling or out with, you know. So, but we may wanna talk about your situation and, and make sure that you got good policy in place and employees know clearly and they've signed for that, that lunch is gonna be deducted. Yes, sir? Did y'all hear that? Yep. So if you have a problem, make sure you clearly document. No surprises, and you have some support that we've dealt with this. Outstanding. Yeah, good. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
I was told these employees that if you interrupt their lunch, if somebody goes in and interrupts them and asks them to work questions, does it cost the starter?
Paid time. So that's why we say employees shouldn't take lunch at their desk, 'cause they're gonna answer the phone, they're gonna answer an email. If you have folks on unpaid lunch, and maybe they're in a break room or something, managers, owners, don't bother them, don't interrupt them, because, yeah, that creates that thirty minutes to be paid, even if it's just one phone call or one email. Yep. Okay? Travel time, let's spend some time here. We got folks that are traveling? Huh? Do what?
We're here.
Yeah. I'm talking about, people do overtime. Yeah, I'm sure you have folks traveling or wherever it might be. So travel time can get very difficult, but travel time is treated in two different ways. One is travel during the day. Let's say I leave my home, I come to the shop, come to the office, whatever it is, that travel to the shop is not paid time, you don't have to worry about that. Unless you say, well, Bill, I want you to go to another location or another city that I'm not used to, then that additional commute time that I'm not normally used to or doing is paid time. But anyway, once I get to the office or shop, and then if I'm traveling through the day, for whatever reason, all of that travel time between stops or otherwise, all that travel time is to be recorded on the time record. Okay? And then, of course, from the shop or the office back home is not paid time. So travel during the day is pretty straightforward. We've had somewhere at five o'clock, I finish at five o'clock, Bill, I want you to go to somewhere for some training or a meeting, and then travel back to home, all of that travel, all that meeting time after hours is paid time. Okay? The next one is a little more complicated, and it's overnight travel. We're staying overnight in a hotel, we're staying away from somebody's home. The only thing that you're required to do for pay purposes is pay their normal schedule. Let's say Bill Ford works eight to five. Even if you say, Bill, five o'clock, I want you to catch a plane, I want you to fly to Las Vegas, four hours, get a hotel, get a meal, and then go to the show the next day, all of that travel time, no matter how long it takes me in a plane, car, train, or otherwise, is not paid time. Okay? You only have to pay me for my eight to five. And then as you mentioned, let's say, I show up and then you pay me from eight to five when I'm away from the business. And that includes Saturday and Sunday. So you're just required to pay your normal schedule, if that makes sense. Okay?
So if you've got staff employed, you send to the show?
Yes, these are staff, folks do hourly.
Yeah, staff hour or whatever.
They're due hourly overtime, yeah.
Coming here to the show, I only have to worry about paying their normal forty hours.
Yes, not travel after hours, yeah. Now, if they travel during the day, let's say that you let them travel during the day, work till noon and then travel, you only have to pay up to five o'clock, and then the travel after five o'clock is not paid time. Yes, sir?
Is there a latitude for special arrangements where it's COVID-vish to be recorded in the employer? In other words, you know, it's not a job requirement, let's say we have a staff member, and we don't leave him to do a show like this. Benefits, of course, but is there latitude that we would like to offer to send you and we'll pay you X, and some of the time to do yours on and some of the time to do ours? Or can we give them a budget? Is it anywhere?
Yeah, when you get into training time, there's four stipulations that require it, and if it benefits you at all, you're gonna pay for it. Now, you could come up with, some employers, we've worked with some, that'll come up with a voluntary arrangement. It's totally voluntary on their part, and they agree that it's voluntary. And maybe they wanna go to a show or get some training or certification or something else, you don't require it. Doesn't necessarily benefit you, but it's a nice thing to do, you may not have to pay for that if it's truly voluntary.
Can we assign them things to do while they're there?
No. Now you're directing their, you smart man, too. Yes.
You've got questions about travel time. I mean, I'm hourly, I work eight to five, I have to be out there, I need to pick them up, I hang out for two, four hours before team starts. I'm gonna pay you that percentage from the time they start at eight.
Whatever their normal schedule is back at the shop or office.
I'm eight to five, I need to be there. So a meeting or something they're going to until eight.
Great question. So now you're requiring them to attend a meeting after hours, that is paid time. Now, if they're just hanging out with a group and going to dinner and, you know, that kinda thing, no. But if there is something after hours that you require them to be, that is paid time. Very good comment.
A year ago, that hanging out with people and going there, we have to go back in here. So, I wouldn't say that you're, you're asking, we're all hanging out from midnight.
That's not paid time. That's not paid time. Yeah, y'all, you're gonna talk shop, but that's not what we're talking about, yeah. Okay. We talked about lunches, pre-work, be careful about folks coming in early, they're not gonna do this normally, but they maybe start to get ready for the day, and then they clock in. That pre-work may be compensable time, but we rarely see that. What we see more likely is someone comes in early, they clock, and then they hang out till their day starts, and they're hanging out at the break room, talking with their buddies or whatnot. You have every right, again, to edit your time records, and if they're not, if they clocked in early and they're not working, you have every right to change it. Sign off on it, have the employee initial it, et cetera. Even better, maybe even make a note that, look, you're not supposed to be doing this and counsel them. So you have every right to change that. Number four, not calculating the regular rate properly, and this is primarily for overtime purposes. Who are paying the bonuses? Non-discretionary bonuses? Okay, you're probably not gonna hear this, but these non-discretionary bonuses, attendance, safety, productivity, sales, all of that's money's earned for the purposes of overtime. So let's say Bill Ford gets a hundred dollars for good safety for the month of May. I get paid that in June. What you have to do is you have to prorate that hundred dollars back across May. Twenty-five dollars a week is basically what I earned, and if I worked overtime during one of those work weeks, you have to pay overtime on the twenty-five bucks. Okay? So all of that money is overtime eligible. Again, the ADPs of the world, you gotta watch, they don't pay, you have to monitor that yourself. Can't average work weeks, back to your original question, no such thing as comp time, except for the state government. Be careful about wage deductions. One of the most frustrating calls we get through our service agreement with our clients is that they'll call, somebody's quit, they haven't turned in their uniforms or turned in a piece of equipment, cellphone, computer, and they can't get it. Cannot hold their final paycheck. Can't hold that final paycheck. So if you're doing any type of payroll deductions, any kind of, any kind of things like that that they share in with you, make sure that it's authorized and all that's understood and properly deducted. Number six, misuse of independent contractors. Some organizations are paying people across payables, not across payroll, thus avoiding all kinds of liability and expenses, et cetera. Of course, if you issue a ten ninety-nine, that's going to the government, IRS is monitoring this because they want their payroll tax dollars, they know people are trying to avoid these rules and regulations. So if you're issuing a ten ninety-nine, if you're treating someone as an independent contractor, be very careful. But it's very simple, who is an independent contractor and who isn't? Someone who's in business, they're advertising, got a license, they own their own company truck, own tools, equipment, supplies, invoicing you, et cetera, that's an independent contractor. Now, with you all, and I discussed this last year at length, within DEMA, you all are using independent instructors, right, at times? No? Yes? And you're doing what with them? Pay them out of payables, issuing a ten ninety-nine? You're running across payroll, good. You're running them across payroll? Yeah? No? Okay. I'm not singling you out. Yeah, some are not running them across payroll, and the government's gonna be a little upset with that, because they're truly not in business as a quote instructor business, and they're not providing this service to others in the community, et cetera. Yep, you're just using them on a part-time basis. And it's really good, think about this, it's probably a good thing you do if you run them across payroll. If somehow one of these independent contractors got hurt, or hurt someone else, you know they don't have the proper insurance, workers' comp or otherwise, you're gonna be hung out to dry. If you run them across payroll, workers' comp's gonna be familiar with it, you're gonna have certain umbrella policies, et cetera. So it does reduce your liability, I know it costs a little more with payroll taxes, but there is some advantage to running them across payroll for those kinds of things. Okay. Covered an awful lot, full day's seminar in an hour or so. Yes, sir?
Couple of questions. I don't think I've heard it really, but I'm asking. I know some dive shops pay instructors for, by the class.
By the class?
No, they're saying, you know, they get over a hundred, that makes dollars, students or something, right? How does that tie in with hours?
So you can pay by the class or by the day or whatever, they just need to keep some sort of record of time. And as long as that stipend or that fee, fifty dollars, hundred dollars, yields minimum wage for that time, you're okay.
So you do have to factor that time in there, make sure?
Yes.
Well, if you're paying X dollars, and the time spent at the minimum hourly rate?
Yields, yeah, yields minimum wage, you're okay. Yep.
The other question is, is that instructors will sell a trip, some sort of, and they go off to the trip and enjoy, it's just, all the meals, airfare, real pay them out?
Do you pay them at all?
No.
Common? Did y'all hear that?
Yeah, very common, yeah.
So what they wanna do, the advantage to them is they get to go?
Free.
Free and?
Free dives.
How many thousand-dollar dive trips, all expenses paid?
What's their obligation?
To show a good time to the people that are on board.
I have a question, if they're, if they're working, they have to make themselves available to the customer at all.
So they're your representative? It's working time.
So they're, you pay that whole week, regular wage.
Yep. So what you may wanna do then is you take that eight-thousand-dollar trip, I'm just thinking out loud, I shouldn't be doing this now, but y'all are smart people, you can figure it out, just take that eight-thousand-dollar trip, maybe pay foreign expenses and then pay the other where their holes, that makes sense? So where their compensation is. But I see that as working time, don't you? Yeah?
See, that's gonna be a strange thing, too, because, tell you, one person's on a trip for a week, and, you know, an eight-hour week, or, you know, eight-hour day, eight-hour week, but they may be, you know, taking people to dinner, doing things after hours, and then he gets into that whole, you know.
I think I would just be clear, when they're supposed to be available. Now, if they wanna entertain and hang out and buddy-buddy, I think after hours is okay, but you know what their primary responsibility is during the day on that dive trip, yeah?
I think the important thing on that is to have a policy, have a, it happens very often, most of the time, if you do it, like you go to, then you have a trip, so you go off, which is paying them, they sell twelve, they get to go with them, where's the really cost of that coming? The view or the training or the travel location, a lot of that is that. It's like their, 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 their. As long as you have a policy, we're done, it's like, when you do these things, here's the policy we're gonna follow, make sure that you are working for us, you're also working for them. Because you're working for us, you comply with the FLSA and make sure that this is allocated, and make sure that they know that ahead of time when they go. So if they come back, they're on, say, hey, I was working eighty hours a week during that one week vacation I spent, got off to the dive and drinking, you have some policy that does it.
Yeah.
And you?
Excellent, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
We have a couple situations, too, where we have some hybrids with some of our employees, like they work in the store during day, then may actually teach a class at night, which is done on like a, you know, per head basis or something, teaching that class, because they wanna teach the class. So what you're saying, does that then become an overtime situation?
It can. So did y'all hear that, dual roles during the shop and then instructing? Yes. You can pay different rates of pay, you can maybe pay an instructor rate, one flat rate after hours, but again, those hours that they spend are totaled for the week, all hours for the week.
Part of total hours that it's that?
Potentially throws them into overtime. Yes.
An overtime based on whatever that total salary was that week?
Correct.
They're then getting paid overtime.
That's right.
Sounds like putting us in a position to say, well, you can work eight hours in the store, make X amount of dollars, or you can teach a class after work and make X amount of dollars, which can be both.
My soapbox, and that's what happens. Ultimately, with all these rules and regulations, the employee gets punished. They may wanna make some extra money, but we can't do that because of this, and we have to pay this, and blah, 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 and, yeah. So now we restrict hours of work, opportunities, all kinds of things. But that is a consideration that needs to be addressed. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, something about, what's kind of like a, a job, so?
Family? Maybe immediate family, you and your husband in the business?
Well, we have, we have people that work with us in other businesses, and so, is there a difference in, in working at meas, in training, or just, I mean, training or, do you know?
We need to take a look at that and see if there's any type of percent ownership, what kinda duties they're performing, what their salary is, there's various things. And the only reason why I say that is one of the saddest cases I had earlier in the year was, Department of Labor came in this business, very nice, well-run business, just peach of a man, sitting there, working on, Department of Labor came in, working on, well, really hundreds of thousands of dollars in back wages. In the end, it came out that his nephew, who was orphaned, that he took in, put to school, paid his rent, bought his car, pays his insurance, all of these nice things he did for his nephews, wanted to turn him in. Guy was in tears, after all he had done for him. But anyway, so be careful, just because they're family, we'd wanna talk about your specific relationships and duties and?
Not that, you know, I think there's a limitation at all, but I didn't know if it was specific.
No. No specific exemption, just for quote family, no? Now, I've got a son, twenty-six, if he turned me in, I know what I'd do. I might get a notion complaint then, but I don't even know what time it is. What time is it, folks?
Ten.
Ten after.
Ten after what?
Ten.
Okay. So what time were we to run, two fifteen? Other questions? These are all good questions. Yes, sir?
Because when an hourly employee, while at one point, they can manage a lot of stuff, they just, they'll, 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 oh.
Great question. I'm gray-headed and I've been doing it a long time. Early on in my career, twenty-eight years ago, they would focus on the one complaint. In fact, they would say, business, or Bill Ford, you helped them, you all calculate the back wages you think are due, and we would send it in. So they would really be focused on one or two things. Now, it's if they're in the business, they're under quotas, they're reviewing everything while they're there, so not just the one position. Yeah. They're calculating it, and in fact, what they're doing now, because we've had employees tear up checks, don't want them. They're saying, send the checks to us, and we will issue those to make sure that there's a canceled check. Now, then the employee has to pay you back cash if they don't want it. All right, other questions? Anybody win? Has anybody won? Nope.